Cape Charles Town Council meeting for May 19 to close the border. Let me have a roll call, please.
Natalie here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Ben in here.
Brian, Brian.
We have a quorum. Let's stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
We'll start with the recognition of visitors and presentation, but before we do that, I have a letter I would like to read. It's addressed to me. The subject is voting safety course. I would like to take this time to thank the leadership of the town of Cape Charles for the opportunity to offer a public voting safety course at the town community center on 9 April 2016. The course was co-sponsored by the Cape Charles Yacht Club and the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flatilla 12-2 for the purpose of teaching safe voting practices to those who use the waters in and around the eastern shores. A total of 36 residents of the eastern shore, most of whom were from Cape Charles, attended and successfully completed the course of instruction and the state of Virginia approved exam. The state of Virginia currently requires all voters 50 years of age and younger to have completed an approved voter safety course or its equivalent in order to legally operate a power vessel in Virginia. As of 1 July 2016, all voters will meet this requirement or an acceptable variance accepted by the state. By allowing us to offer this course, it has provided more voters to use the waters in Virginia with the knowledge needed to make them safer voters. If another voting education course is desired to be offered in Cape Charles, please feel free to contact me at the number provided. Sincerely, Ron West, U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. Thank you very much for that letter and thanks for that course because it benefits the town and the citizens surrounding it greatly. And now I'd like to read a proclamation on National Safe Voting Week. Recreational voting is fun and enjoyable and we are fortunate that we have sufficient resources to accommodate the wide variety of pleasure voting demands. However, our waterways can become crowded at times and be a place of chaos and confusion. While being a marvelous source of recreation, voting can be unprepared to be a risky sport. Not knowing or obeying navigation rules or the nautical rules of the road, drinking alcohol or taking drugs while operating a boat, or choosing not to wear your life jacket when doing so is clearly not the smart thing to do are all examples of human error or a lack of proper judgment. One particular behavior that can reduce the number of voters who lose their lives by drowning each year by approximately 80% is the wearing of a life jacket. It is a simple task that has the potential to reduce terrible loss in lives. Whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in voting-related accidents in the U.S., nearly 70% of these fatalities are caused by drowning and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the vote equipment or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of voters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. And whereas modern life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's voting public. And whereas U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Flatilla 12-2 Painter provides safe voting instruction for persons of all ages in order to prevent voting accidents and to teach rescue and survival techniques in case one does occur. Therefore, be it resolved, the Cape Charles Town Council hereby supports the goals of the North American Safe Voting Campaign and proclaim May 21 through 27, 2016 as National Safe Voting Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe voting. All voters are encouraged to wear their life jackets, vote responsibly, and enroll in a safe voting class. And witness thereof, all those who vote are urged to vote smart, vote safe, wear and practice safe voting habits. May I have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
No.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your real addition to our town will always have to be a new try bar to promote voting safety, keep people aware of safety on water, and for the Coast Guard.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I'll have to go to watch.
Oh, sure. Bruce, sorry.
Oh, voting camera, okay.
Okay.
It's not his camera either.
We're good. We're good.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So, next order of business, we have newly elected council members meeting in book halls. We invited him to sit here as a courtesy. He is not allowed to know or participate in the discussion, but we wanted to hear Adara Sullivan was unable to be here because of family things that she needed to take care of. Of course, also current council member and newly elected council member Steve Bennett does get to speak, and we hope he will do both. So, welcoming. Next order of business, comments, if you have any, public comments. All right. I need a motion to approve the agenda format.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The format is approved. I need a motion to approve events from the previous meetings. Any comments?
No.
Second. All right, are there any comments? Minutes, take this discussion. All in favor of approving minutes?
Aye.
I approve. Treasurers report.
The first page is cash. The total available cash in hand at the end of April was $1,696,031. That was an increase of $7,300 over March. The total restricted reserve cash was $1,467,416. Total cash of all accounts as of April 30 was $3,163,447. We have no more debt service payments this fiscal year. Any questions? Page two. Shows current year fund balances as of April 30. The general fund is year-to-date revenue of $2.24 million, year-to-date expenses of[440.62][440.62]$1.88 million for a net balance of $360,000. Public utilities fund has year-to-date revenue of $1.49 million, year-to-date expenses of $1.22 million for a net balance of $270,000. Harbor fund has year-to-date revenue of $1.25 million, year-to-date expenses of $1.56 million for a net balance of -345,000. Breakwater rate receipts and the town match total of $198,000 are pending, and that leaves a net operations balance of -147,000. All debt service payments have been made for the year and $107.9,000 on the loss of budget.
Okay, the $345,000. Mention about...
The three, well, we'll get breakwater rate receipts and the town match, that's $198,000.
Okay, I see.
Yeah. So, we're really only behind about $30,000 at this point in this busy season, so hopefully we'll catch that up. Sanitation fund has year-to-date revenue of $155,000, year-to-date expenses $129,000 for a net balance of $26,000, and that's just a lag in going on their part. Capital projects? We dispersed $4,699 for capital expenditures in April, just $2,100 for the trail project and $2,599 for the playground construction. Tax collection statistics? We collected 98% of budgeted property taxes by the end of April and 104% of personal business property tax budget. And then, the very bottom one, the total prior year real estate collections, personal property tax interest and penalty. That number was higher last month. I corrected the budgeted amounts and that, this is the correct number, 61%. The budgeted amounts on this report that sometime earlier got changed. We're at 61% of budgeted prior year tax and penalty collections. And the last page, the tax revenue year-over-year. Mills tax revenue is remaining 20% higher than the same month in 2015. It's been that way for several months. Transient occupancy tax remains about 40% higher than in 2015. Local sales tax, that's remaining a flat 20.4% higher than in 2015. NEPA was lagging behind the previous two years as many businesses did 518 or not make a file. Jen Lewis went around and when she took the maps, town maps for discussion about their inclusion, she reminded in the file. We did get several people after that and also Bob Bennett set out a few reminder letters to people that have been multi-year noncompliant, and so that was very helpful. We got a few applications for that. Now that the budget's wrapped up, we're able to focus on NEPA in our department. Any questions?
Make any motion to approve the trade of the board?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion further? All in favor? Are you opposed? I should be further than course accepted. Next, other, planning commission, other orders?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The council, there's a couple of updates to the staff reports and so let's go through the background. Well, compile them. If, under planning commission, at their meeting on Monday night, they directed staff to come back with a draft language relative to Article 3, Section 3.8, the commercial 3 district for design and construction standards. By the way, the text amendment, this was a follow-up meeting last month where the council directed the planning commission to look at that issue, so it'll go back with the text amendment, proposed text amendment at the June 7 meeting. Under the Wetlands and Coastal Dunes Board, there's an update there to the preliminary discussion that was presented in the report. The board, it will meet on June the 1st, record that proposed to be 4 o'clock until Wednesday to discuss the beach sand issue, and then on June 15th at 6:00 p.m. in this building, it's also a Wednesday, to hold a community meeting, folks who have questions about the beach sand issue.
Those are the...
Those are the...
Those, yeah, I have all of that.
But how?
All's public meetings, so we're gonna post it as we deal with the agenda and the, you know, the website and then also in the physical locations we go. But also look at it, because it's up, won't get it, is it on the 4th?
And for the 15th meeting, I'll also post and submit an affidavit.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got, by the way. This update, and of course, there's each dredge update. Relatively recently, back yesterday afternoon, a letter was emailed, was sent to me, it was a letter dated May 16th, from the project manager of Cottrell Contracting informing the Virginia Marine Resources Commission that the Harbor Dredge Project would begin the week of June 1 and Dragan expected to commence shortly thereafter, that's their words. The project is expected to be completed by June 100, or September 15, 2016. Approximately 100,000 cubic yards to be pumped on a Cape Charles bum beach and remaining approximately 102,000 cubic yards to be pumped at the Upland Site. So, that's the beach dredge project update as it stands right now.
Also, the pre-construction meeting will be this coming Tuesday, just... Any questions?
Yeah. The, when we talked last, they were gonna start within so many days of NTP and I thought their completion date was like June, and there was some concern voiced at that meeting by a number of people that it was gonna impact tourist season, so now it's gonna impact the entire summer. Completion date was 128 from the worst of the season.
Well, there was a June date mentioned at the last meeting.
No, there was a 17 days from June, from April 27th.
I think they were starting, they were hopeful they might off the beach.
Correct.
Sometime in June.
Maybe 17.
And then it'd be shifting their hydraulic line to the Upland Site, is I think what the thoughts were, that they're gonna start initially on the beach and then they would move. Of course, that was under the premise they would be starting maybe early April and then they would move to, they would be complete with their beach portion sometime in June and move the rest of their operation to the site, which now we're talking about June 1st beginning, which... So, we don't yet know how many days it's gonna take them to do the beach, correct?
We do have, it's on June 28th.
And...
We have the sub-plans that shows the proposed arrangement of the 100,000 yards of sand on our beach.
Nothing has been updated from the first phase.
The draft, it shows something.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and that was also submitted in their application, in the Army Corps' application to the MRS. So, we've got the location cited, and in fact, there's also a discussion about the sand beach, southern beaches. So, all that is well documented, but as far as a contour map, we don't have that for this phase.
No, because their original, their initial, they showed that the beach could handle 93,000 cubic yards of sand, which they threw 70,000 cubic yards, I think is their estimate, last spring.
Probably more.
Maybe more, so... Wait, 93,000?
Oh, total?
Yeah. So, we're gonna put 170,000 there? They seem to believe it's not gonna be an issue. They're gonna be expanding the width of the dunes, is what they, I don't know how much capacity that would hold, but they would not raise the height, they did say that they would be widening the dunes. Going north?
Yes.
And the south, they're, they're not gonna touch the south, okay.
I understand.
They're starting on Monroe, so they're starting, that's why they stopped.
Have they yet come to town to see the results of the weather? If they did, I'm not aware. I did make them aware, though, that we saw quite a bit of movement from the sand over the northern boil, we called. It did jump our pier, but it then started to fill in south of the pier with the concern and the jetty, that we could have a pier with a foot of water underneath it. Additionally, I raised the concern that that sand boiled up in the channel that they just had dredged last fall, if nothing is done to sort of stabilize the area, which is my understanding, the third phase of the contract which we're about to move into includes spraying of the dunes as well as placement of dunes, or sand dunes, excuse me. But, yeah, it wasn't the dunes that blew, it was the whole beach that blew. The whole beach, right. Both, beach created. You know, it increased the sand, but it didn't. I'm not at all passionate about what's going on, and I don't think we've spoken loudly or at all, I'm not aware, what correspondence we've had with Corps of Engineers. I personally tried to intervene and have had a couple of meetings, a couple of phone calls with various people, but I'm not at all excited about getting 100,000 cubic yards of sand on the beach, nor am I excited about getting it on there during the summer, which is not dredge season. And I get it that the Corps says they can't change anything, but I'm not buying that either, so... I think that we need to write a letter from the town to the Corps and probably copy our state delegates and our congressman, and in no uncertain terms tell them that we would like them to stop until we can be satisfied that what they're doing is not going to have the negative impact on the town that we think it is. They don't seem to care about that, and I'm just, I'm tired of the non-caring attitude, and we don't seem to care. You know, it's our town, it's our beach, it's a tourist destination, the beach is one of the biggest draws, and it's gonna be heavily impacted. I find that, I agree, I think you're right. Agreed. Is there any further discussion on this or comment? I think probably that letter could come from you, Mayor. Yes, of course. Either both say to you, you and town, I'd rather it be better. We can certainly do that. What about backup plan? If they're, if they're going to respond? Well, you know, we should talk about that as well, because quite frankly, if they're insistent on, and I don't know what the opposite side will think about holding them up, but personally, if they're gonna put sand on the beach, they don't put another 20,000 or 40,000 cubic yards on the north end, you're certainly gonna get 100,000 cubic yards of sand on the beach. I don't care what they're gonna do with it, and putting grass on the dunes is not gonna stabilize the beach. And it's not without their showing us how they're gonna be able to do that without making the beach, you know, basically unusable. I don't think they can do that, I agree. All right. There is also a meeting, is there not, with Army Corps of Engineers coming up next Tuesday? This coming Tuesday, there'll be a pre-construction meeting with Cottrell, right, in Chesapeake. But also the Army Corps of Engineers in their address, but I think...
I think we need to have a sweater for them before that meeting.
Yes, it's definitely tomorrow. Yes, but I believe we also need, I'll be attending that meeting. I hope you can come, Steve?
All right, I'm in the, I'm in the downtown Tuesday.
All right, no, I'll be there.
You can have a beach board. You can have a beach board with...
Wetlands, Wetlands Board was what, Wetlands and Coastal Dunes Board was what Doug was just talking about, that they're gonna be meeting, but to, relative to stabilizing the dunes. All right, any further discussion here? Questions? Co-Enforcement.
Nothing to add, just, council, if there are any questions.
Any questions? I have none, thank you. Tom Harber.
Mr. Mayor, council. Really, I have a couple of small things to add that have been questioned about and talked about, and one is the Tall Ships Links, I talked to him today, and they're a ship that's been here during our Tall Ship Festival, if you're familiar with it, and it's been talked about and addressed, that maybe this becoming the court a call. And talking to Mr. Peacock today, he is requesting a letter from the town offering him and asking if they would come to our office, and he said it would help his cause if it came from the town. I can get particulars on it, bullet form, and, you know, this is how he talked to me in the past, and if they want to talk with her, then she can relate to the council follow.
So, is there any cost to the town for this?
No, other than it would take up burping, an area of byishing is where it's at, and they're going to other venues during holidays, so I see that it not taking up any valuable spot where, because during our holidays, that area is booked. So, I see them being, they're there during off-season more so, and then they may be south, but we would probably have a pretty good itinerary, knowing when they would be in port, it wouldn't be nothing special, and then there, I discussed it with him, is any other cost, there's many other costs, other than electricity, will be at their expense. We could handle their pump out, we could handle their, their work is very, very, very low.
Will they be running tristada here for local people going to the town?
Trips, I'm not sure.
Not trips?
At some point, it could be addressed, but the boat, if it's staffed, I'm not sure, but very important, they may have minimal staff, so it may not be open to the public during some time frames, but if it's here during the summer, we can actually talk to him about making sure that it's staffed enough that it can take tours, you know, on the vessel, and then maybe trips, you know, especially if they charge.
With all the stories, we could speak to.
Yes, yeah, could be something to look into.
And if, I think if it became, if Cape Charles became their home port, it would be good for us to ask them to put that on the stern.
Yes, yes.
Which then is a big kudos for the town, even when they're traveling to other ports along the eastern coast or wherever. Cape Charles, Cape Charles will be their home port. So, I see a lot of benefit and cost to us, and this is the Tall Ships Committee that basically asked county manager to investigate this burden, and then he asked Charlie to facilitate.
Yeah, some of the research I did prior to handing off the show, Cristo, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yeah, Cristo.
They host the Tall Ship and leave the town to Town Harbor, I believe they have an agreement, so it would probably do just, they also have some sort of a legal agreement with the links to sort of spell out the details of what we're talking about. I would very much like to see the details spelled, I think it's a great idea, but, for example, how many days, what days do they expect to be here, if we're gonna be selling those earths?
Yeah.
How many times in the year? I mean, we can't, we can't have that arrive and it's still in with boats.
Exactly, yes.
So, I'd like to understand that, what they would provide, what they provide, what they would do with it, what you were suggesting.
I can, I can do some research and look at, say, their last three years itinerary to see where they've been during those time frames.
Where they've been, of course, then.
I'm not sure. I've called them three times, but they may have been out on sale, and I've talked to them today after.
Not sure if they have one that they have been on.
They were, they were.
This came up last year when they were here. They did have a home port, and I cannot remember where it is, but...
It's in New York.
It's in New York, I have no idea, but wherever it was, they were going to need to leave, and one of the questions that I had was why isn't they needing to leave? So, we could get some of those details, you know, the council is very receptive to having them here, I think it could be good for the town. I think it's best to get this all in writing, so we all know exactly what we're agreeing to.
Right. And we can set that up and see if they have any past agreements, if they send us a copy of what they had, to give us an idea of their past.
And in no uncertain terms tell them that we would like them to stop. Until we can be satisfied that what they're doing is not going to have the negative impact on the town that we think it is. They don't seem to care about that and I'm just, I'm tired of the non caring attitude and we don't seem to care. You know, it's our town, it's our beach, it's a tourist destination. The beach is one of the biggest draws and it's gonna be heavily impacted.
I'm fine with that. I agree with you. I agree. Is there any further discussion on this or comment?
I think probably that letter could come from you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Either both say to you, you intend that drawing probably lead better.
We can certainly do that.
What about backup plan?
Well, you know, we should talk about that as well because quite frankly, if they're insistent, insistent on. And I don't know if the opposite side will take them or hold them or not, but personally if they're gonna put sand on the beach, then they'll put another twenty or forty thousand cubic yards on the north end. You're certainly gonna need a hundred thousand cubic yards of sand on the beach. I don't care what they're gonna do with it and putting grass on the dunes is not gonna stabilize the beach.
But it's not without their showing us how they're gonna be able to do that without making the beach, you know, basically unusable. I don't think they're gonna do that. I agree. Uh, alright. There is also a meeting, is there not, with Army Corps of Engineers coming up next Tuesday?
This coming Tuesday. There'll be a pre-construction meeting with COTL, right, in Chesapeake.
But also the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, they're right.
I think we need to have a letter to them before that meeting.
Yes, it's definitely tomorrow.
Yes, but I believe we also need, I'll be attending that meeting. And I hope you, if you can come, Steve?
Alright, I'm, uh, I'm in our town Tuesday.
Alright, no, I'll be there.
You can have a beach board. You can have a beach board with.
Wetlands, Wetlands Board was what, uh, Wetlands and Coastal Beach Board was what Barry was just talking about. Their meeting, but to, to, relative to stabilizing the beach. Alright, uh, any further discussion here? Questions? Coast enforcement.
Uh, nothing to add. Just, just counsel, if there are any questions.
Uh, any questions? I have none. Thank you. Town Harbor.
Mr. Mayor. Um, Billy, I have a couple of small things to add, uh, that have been questioned about and talked about. And one is the, uh, Tall Ships links. I talked to him today. And they're a, uh, the ship that's been here during our Tall Ship Festival, if you're familiar with. Um, and it's been talked about and addressed that maybe this becoming the port of call. Um, and talking to, uh, Mr. Peacock today. He is requesting a letter from the town offering him and, uh, asking if, uh, they would come to our harbor. And he said it would help his cause if it came from the town. Um, I can get particulars on it, put it in bullet form and, you know, to show me pieces of talent. Talked to him in the past and if they'd like to talk with her and then she can, you know, relate to the council follow.
So is there any cost to the town for this?
No, other than it, it would take up burning, uh, an area of byting is where it's at A dock. And they're gone to other venues during holidays. So I, I see that it not taking up any, any valuable spot. Um, where, because during, during our holidays, that area is booked. So I, I, I see them being, uh, herb there during the off-season more so. And then they may be south, um, uh, but we would probably have a pretty good itinerary, um, knowing when they would be in port. It wouldn't be nothing special. And then there, um, I, I discussed it with him, um, is any other cost, there should be any other cost other than electricity, um, will be at their expense. We, we could handle their pump out, we could handle their, uh, their work is very, very, very low.
Will they be running tristada here for local people going to the town?
Trips, I'm not sure. At some point it could be addressed. Um, but the, but the boat, if it's staffed, I'm not sure, but very important, um, they may have minimal staff. Uh, so it may not be open to the public during some timeframes. But if it's here during the summer, we can actually talk to him about making sure that it's staffed enough that they can take tours, uh, in all the vessel. And then they need trips, you know, especially if they charge.
With all the stories that they speak about.
Yep, could be something to look into.
And if, I think if it became, if Cape Charles became their home port, it would be, um, good for us to ask them to put that on the stern.
Yes, yes.
Which then is a big kudos for them in the town, even when they're traveling to other ports, along the eastern coast or wherever. Cape Port, Cape Charles would be their home port. So I see a lot of benefit and cost to us. Um, and this is the Tall Ships Committee that basically asked county manager to investigate this burden. And then he asked Charlie, Chris Soder.
Yeah, some of the research I did prior to handing off to Charlie, uh, is Cristo in Ireland? I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yeah, Christie, Christie.
Uh, they host the Tall Ship and we leave the town to Town Harbor. I believe they have an agreement, so we'd probably do just to also have some sort of a legal agreement, with the lengths to sort of spell out the details of what we're talking about.
I would very much like to see the details spelled out. I think it's a great idea. But, but for example, how many days, what days do they expect to be here? If we're gonna be selling those, those earths. How many times in the year, I mean, I, we can't, we can't have them arrive and it's still in with boats.
Exactly, yes.
So, so I'd like to understand that, what, what they would provide, what they provide, what they would, what they would suggest.
I can, I can do some research and look at, say, their last three years itinerary to see where they've been during those timeframes.
Where they've been course then?
I'm not sure. I called them three, three times, but they may have been out on sale and I've talked to them today after.
Not sure if they have one that they have been on. They were, they were, this came up last year when they were here. They did have a home port and I cannot remember where it is, but.
It's in New York.
It's in New York. I have no idea. But, but wherever it was, they were going to need to leave. And one of the questions that I had was why isn't they needed to leave? So, so we could get some of those details, you know, the towns would be very receptive to having them here. I think it could be good for the town. I think it's best to get this all in writing. So we all know exactly what we're agreeing to.
Right. And we can set that up, uh, and see if they have any past agreements. And if they send us a copy of what they had, to give us an idea of their past. And just do some research.
Okay.
And I can, I can work with Jim if that's fine.
How long did they want them to arrive, right?
Uh, we, we asked them, I, I, I basically called to ask him, uh, what they were looking for. And there was no timeframe, there was, there was really no, uh, not much more conversation other than they were asking for the letter of, of us asking them if they wanted Cape Charles to be their own port. So maybe they got two or three other places. I'm not, I'm not for sure. I'll talk to them a little more, um, and find out some logistical, um, things that they're looking for. Maybe keep their itinerators from the past.
Correct.
And, uh, I can, I'll, we can, Jim, if that's fine.
Correct, good.
And then, uh, the other addition, um, from the, uh, points of, items of interest, uh, we actually have the AHRUP up for a seal bid on the website. And, yeah, I left it, you know, Cape Charles website in the last two days. It's up there for a week, um, out for seal bid, um.
Got any yet? Have you got any yet?
Not, certainly not yet, unless you wanna, you want to.
I love my happy Christmas, boy.
Uh, it got a lot of good reviews on the boat. It must have. And we've gone on and looked at, uh, boats of the same era, that brand, and they're ringing anywhere from seven to thirty thousand dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, so it's a popular haul. So, and we've had very good interest, uh, excited interest, um, and, uh, one couple has told twice and sent a few emails. They're aware.
Good.
That's all I have.
Any questions?
The B and P work, when does that start?
Uh, met with Kim this morning. Um, the, they're, they're heading, uh, the flower, the plants, um, are slow. Just maybe because of the weather. Um, we're looking to start, we're looking to start this past two weeks. And the plants won't be here until, she said, the first week of June. So that, that's their holdup is, uh, is the plantings. And she's having a tough, tough times finding a couple of, of what she's spec, um, this little growth plant. So she may have to go with a single that, um, will, will grow and, and, you know, handle the environment.
I recognize you got a ton of things going, but, you know, and that's just one of them. But in, in waiting for the work to start, it can allow the beds to, to get overgrown as they have.
That's, that's being taken care of Tuesday. We're addressing holiday weekend. Um, instead of starting, tearing out the beds, then we're, we're gonna keep them, but they'll be, uh, weeded and the whole harbor will be weeded, uh, start, starting Tuesday. And, uh, they'll, they'll have a crew there to do that, to complete that, to clean the harbor up for.
And I know you fight regularly with parking lot management. I think a lot of those over there, it was, it was awful. Uh, we, uh, have got money in the budget.
Yes.
But it's not gonna be available till the first of July, so you're gonna have to, to, to work it over there.
Yeah.
To, to keep somebody from getting hurt in that park.
Right, and cars damaged and, um, I've created it, uh, two times since. I'll, I'll do it again, uh, hopefully tomorrow morning. Um, and it, we, the park has been using a tractor, um, so we, we just don't, we didn't have the equipment to do it. I looked at leasing a piece of a tractor and it was another nineteen hundred dollars that we don't have. And since we got the equipment in town, but it was just tied up and we couldn't get to it.
Yeah, I think we have a big liability in the areas that we need to span.
Yeah, we're, it's.
Yeah, it's, the question, that's, park really needs me over there.
Yes.
Can't you do it in June and then pay the bill and join?
No.
My back is. Chris, it's not my fault.
I, I, I anticipated not being in that condition anyway.
Thank you.
So, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
FYI, this is current all for the Newport Beach, California.
California?
Fire that in the evening.
Oh, okay. Bye, Jerry.
I just wanted to mention that the repair on the meeting room was begun today, um, that we've been waiting for. And I want to remind everybody that our summer reading program starts on June twenty first. And we're going to be partnering again this year with Brine Dog Ice Cream. They made this great little bookmark and we're making the program a little bit harder because last year it kind of became the Brine Dog Summer Reading Program. Uh, because everybody wanted to get, they were told when they get a Brine Dog Ice Cream. So we're, instead of counting books, we're counting minutes this year. We have a whole array of programs. Um, any questions?
Is there age limit on that?
Pardon?
Age limit on that?
There is a age limit.
Friday, it's a show.
Park, yes. We're, we're doing great at the library.
It's good, good. Questions? Thank you.
Alright.
Uh, police department.
I answered questions there. I'm gonna thank my week's roller down.
I have no kind of questions. Is anyone counsel today? An assault officer.
He's a, I'm a teenager assault. Same one every time.
Injuries?
No. Kick a couple times. Backing up, sheriff's office, sheriff in there. Um, one thing I haven't spoke to the town manager about it. Maybe thinking about putting up ordinance, curfew, I guess, on the beach. Not for everybody, um, saying two AM. For one thing, eighty percent of the people after two AM were in a criminal state. We had an incident last weekend at the restaurant on the highway across McDonald's. Of course, it's been every weekend for like the past three weekends, fighting gunshots. Uh, sort of respond. They've also been told they're not gonna win by yourself. They all understand that, so that's what they're doing. But once they break it up, for some reason, seventy-five to a hundred people decided to come to our beach. So the deputies that were all came here, stayed with them till they decided to leave and the chair, and started all up again. So they went back to their house again. So the, if you would not make an ordinance, it's strictly up to the officer on the enforcement. Husband and wife walk down the boulevard at two AM, we're not gonna bother them. But if there's a large, uh, little crowd out there, give us a tool to move them along, just maybe it would help. It might not be issued, it might not ever come back in here, but, and again, it might turn to a regular event every Friday or Saturday.
We could be the new stage, new station.
It won't be that, I'll get a job.
Stay on it. So far, we missed all the violas.
It's two AM already, trying to, I think it's too late.
I actually, I think it's too late to.
Yeah, twelve o'clock.
Well, I know what Jim has to say.
I mean.
Where you think?
My guy, I think two AM is pretty lenient time to do, but I'm just trying to get some. You say midnight, one o'clock.
I think we did not decide that here, but I think.
There isn't that much going on in Cape Charles at midnight, so I don't know why.
Well, whatever, whatever is not necessarily true.
Well, yeah, I mean.
In this territory, in the historic district during the summer, there's a lot of accidents on the beach at twelve o'clock.
But whatever it is, we can, we can get staff to do a little research or what people recommend. So I, I'd be receptive to something that's early.
I just go out at two AM and that's when everything usually shuts down and.
Wow.
But this is fine.
If you had your druthers, would you make it two AM?
What's that?
If you had your druthers, would you still make it two AM?
I would say, I'd give one.
One?
One.
That's what I'm thinking, you know, I'd like to know what you say, right?
Because usually, um, when the other head jumps off, and this is really the first time they've come here. Or, I guess they, it is, on Cape Charles. And then usually when it jumps off, it's usually between twelve-thirty to two. You know, what happens out there, if they shut it down early, then they kick them out. They go on into parking lot, we break them up, do it place to place. So I just don't want to come in here. What they do, you don't know, I assume they get.
What is, what's closing time in the state?
Uh, bars at two AM.
Two AM.
Yeah, but it's not.
So when you.
It's not air bars, it's trouble. It's, trouble starts, they shut these places down and then erupts in parking lots. Then once law enforcement gets there, they leave, they go somewhere else to finish it. So they took two separate spots where it finished last week, started in the parking lot, came to town, grabbed it, they got, finally got sick of the deputies and my guy being with them. So they went to bay view and started that again. So that's when we all, they all got there again, so it's just.
I'd be fine with one AM. I'd ask the staff to just look into that and see what other places do and, you know, we don't, we don't have to.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, so I'm sitting in a car on the board, only rode it one more mile, but run off. But peaceful and end of armed fire, but.
We mentioned all of this, that, 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 uh, went against the parking on the beachfront, but you can't do that now because you've got too many residences that live out there on that beachfront that, uh.
Well.
Interfere with their lives.
You might be able to put it on the beach side, no parking.
But it's not, it's your problem.
No, but it's a way to.
It's a peak. You make, make sure it's on the beach, you know, so.
It is, it's a problem.
It, because it can't, it can't, uh, it can't interfere with the fishing pier. Fishing pier stay open twenty-four seven, because that's not an hour.
They also do another marine resource.
So public side.
Well, that's why the parking went away, you know, on the beach you can.
Have a mortal.
Yeah, I mean, there's unlockable, but.
There are.
What constitutes that?
There, there are ways to.
Right.
Once somebody's put hands on it.
So, so you, you, uh, staff will take a look at this and cover the recommendation. How long would it take us to, you know, a special meeting or something? I would be wait till June.
Oh, we're, next workshop meeting is.
Uh, the next available date is June second.
Second. They can solve it, we can turn on, right?
It seems to me that the ordinance can be agreed right now, or tomorrow or next week. The only issue is the time.
And, and, well, even if, even if there are other things we learn that we might want to modify the ordinance or that we learned from other things that towns have done, it can still be modified pretty quickly. Plus, you know, so it's a good idea to get.
It can, but I, I, I get the sense that we want to pass it as soon as we can.
No, I'm saying.
It's, it's in effect during the summer, not in the fall.
Right. No, I'm saying they can write it in, in, in a week or two if we needed to, but if they learn more things, they can modify it more here and there.
Can always be changed.
Right. It doesn't work over here.
It's not for a town.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just it's that show that a lot of crime doing, uh, two o'clock out or before that.
Yeah, there's plenty, plenty out there.
Well, I'm backing that for trial. You okay?
Still. Leave that, you.
I think I can do a whole that, you know.
I do, uh, majority thing like at two o'clock in the morning here. Or something shit.
Right. As soon as possible. Yep.
Okay, do we have, do we have a, do we have a law that, that you get a fourth or one or four sentence?
Yes, it's state code, town code.
How much notice do you have to give?
Just have to declare it.
You did, the chief of police can't declare it.
Any officer can declare it, I'll, the question falls in the, I mean, I guess that's, you can charge them, but then, I guess it's up to the judge to say if they have enough time to lead you forward.
I'm trying to think of a way we can do this without affecting the people that have a gym.
Well.
Sitting out there watching the moonlight or something.
Well, that's all up to them.
But when you start enforcing, you've got this group down there who's watching the sun, the moon, and you got another fifty out there.
Well, I think the two are who are watching the moon and the fifty get there and start going crazy.
But it might be on one part of the beach. It might be on one part of the beach sitting there like that. Because they're normally, they, they, they gather right between the fishing pier and the, you know, the beach. Think they have to be real careful on, on the beach, closing the beach. You kind of stuff with you guys, it's just, you have to pick and choose who enforce it. And it might come and bite you when you force it on, start grouping and you don't.
Or maybe you can insert something like quiet enjoyment of the beach.
Well, I mean, I think if you do something other than just a beach closure.
That's why I think we look at loitering, you know, it's maybe a.
Well, they, 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 Virginia did away with the lottery tax.
But I, I switched it, I switched it.
We used to have one here in town, effectively, when everybody would gather in front of the shore, you know, on nice and happy. We used to force it and then they, well, the general son of the council, they, you know, you have that part.
That's, I, I think that is a big concern and I think that's one reason why we, we ought to look at what other towns have done. Because they may have figured out a way to solve that particular problem. And I don't think it's gonna take them no long time to get that information, maybe E and L will mess some ideas about that.
Normally, normally with solid, there's a high police presence at two o'clock in the morning.
They roll up, they roll up and rush to it very easily, don't they?
Yep. Jim, how many, they, how many noisy, bad, noisy parties do you have during the summertime, you think, now with all the tourists? Is it located in the Old Town, Marina Village?
We have it, we have it working. Well, yeah, it's, it's a problem.
Can't do.
Sitting on the porch, your music player, you get bothered at two in the morning, turn it down, that issue is a big creek.
Yep, we have. They generally, though, people generally listen to you, so you don't have to do anything other than tell them to shut it down, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's allowed, I'm sure you have to do more than that.
Okay, oh, yeah, but often.
But not often. Okay, any more questions? Okay. You, uh, let's see, utilities. Grant, you can take us through this, Steve, I know you have some questions. I have a question or two myself, but. Did you look at the?
I looked at, uh, you know, it's pretty self-explanatory, I'm not sure. I guess just to note that there was a, uh, a chart included within the staff report that shows the, uh.
Well, before we get to that, uh, capital projects, there's a preliminary engineer's request for the, for the all systems and coordination, but I hope we're not doing that. Or did I, I misread that?
I can not recall. I knew it was an option.
The P D O is included somehow. It's just another part of the, oh, the thing on the report doesn't need to be on there. I consider it a new one.
Okay, this is not something, this is not a new. Okay, this is not something, this is not new, P E R. Okay, now, please go along with the chart.
I was gonna mention that he included, Mr. Falber included a chart, uh, showing rain, or water pump rainfall, and, uh, wastewater treatment plant oil. This attempting to show correlation between the spike in the, uh, the amount of wastewater treated at the plant, showing a relationship to that and rainwater.
Yeah, I'd have to say that I don't see much correlation there, uh, personally.
I don't either.
Between June of fifteen and October of fifteen, you can almost see a correlation, I think, in a manner that you'd like to see it all the time. But the tendency of the wastewater to exceed the water production doesn't always follow the rainfall, sometimes it precedes it, sometimes it comes after, sometimes it comes during.
Right.
Uh, so, you know, to me, I appreciate an input in there, uh, I don't see that we can draw any conclusion from that.
Steve, I agree, there, there's, I see only two places where it looks like there's a correlation with a big, uh, increase in rainfall and a peak in wastewater flow. But there are other places where the rainfall drops and things go up, it's, I don't, I don't see any correlation there.
In last month, we exceeded, wastewater exceeded the water, again, six hundred gallons.
Yeah. Yes. So, we still don't know what's going on here.
Well, I'll ask Bob his question, maybe he can answer. I was told that, that in our wastewater plant, we use a lot of re-wash or washing, wash, that same word, recirculate.
Well, yeah, there's, there's, there's plenty of.
And that's included in the amount of gallons that they're showing from.
Uh, it would be, yes, once discharged, yes.
Once discharged.
The, uh, there's plant recycled for water for non-pollute use, uh, as well as for backpulsing, there's a storage cap. Backpulsed to the end.
So some of this water that we're showing is actually recirculated several times.
Um.
And added to the discharge.
It, it, a little bit, yes, because it's measured through, um, after the eggworks, before it goes to the wastewater flow, it's measured between eggworks and the.
But would that reduce, would that reduce the difference instead of that?
Well, if you didn't, if you, if you, if you, if the gallons are there and you're continuing to use this eggwork.
It just depends on.
It depends on what you're.
Yeah, the backpuls wouldn't, because it goes back into the membrane, that's, it's downstream of the. The other plant water, if it was discharged, if it was washed, something was discharged into the manhole, then it does go back to the dead plant.
But it's still, was.
But it's not.
It was, but it was still measured in there in the first place, I mean, you're not, you're not.
Same as the square as the big measure began.
Yeah.
Whatever goes back to that plant.
So there's some deviation there after what it, what we're, what we're.
But I don't think it would explain the numbers that are large, so.
What do you think, what do you think the number would be, five percent, something like that?
I couldn't, couldn't guess. Six hundred.
Okay, any other questions? Public, Public Works?
I have a question.
Oh, on utilities, Public Utilities, so, that's fine, that's fine, just ask me.
I do have a question.
Good.
I thought at last council meeting, we talked about new water.
Yes.
And I'd like to know what the status is on that.
I'm waiting for them to contact me, and I've pushed out for them, uh, it sounds like they will be able to help us look at their mission statement. Uh, it's helped in the training and also the, uh, sort of operations of waste water treatment, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The water out here. Just coming from the sun pumps.
Yes, is there any way that, that they can contact the state and try to get them to, to at least lower this, the, 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 cut the street, the dip? Because the water's gonna be there, we're gonna have our mosquito season, coming to things like the bull sign, people, elderly people jumping over the puddles, not some don't quite make it. It's been looking like that for years now.
Just call, uh, do you, uh.
Huh?
Just call me up.
Just trying to get the, please, chief, elected positions are up a little bit. That'd be interesting.
The fact that that was, it's, it was out of a small room, showing.
That would be what you, yeah. All right, uh, Public Works. Okay, presentation.
Case everybody's having a fun meeting, a crappy blues has been changed to Sunday from two to eight.
Microphone, Bob.
Crappy blues has been changed to Sunday from two to eight, so it's a date change and a time change.
Two to seven.
Two to seven.
Two to seven, I'm sorry, security's on the eight, I've done that. Two to seven. And that's all I have, I have no questions.
Are you rearranging your volleyball and beach things, if there's gonna be sand on the, on the sand?
Of course.
That's just something else.
Well, the.
How about.
Can't answer that.
We'll figure that.
You'll be in the south of the beach in any case. Right.
We'll adjust as needs, we don't have any other choice.
Right.
We'll figure that. Have a, the, uh, town, first town yard sale. Um, I, I got a little bit of an added feedback, um, just keeping up with lies where the parking lot is, and I was also asked to change it, I think we need to keep it there. Just so more people will know about the parking lot, put up a couple of signs next month to help direct a little better, and the outdoor market will be there next weekend, so we'll see.
First Saturday of each month.
Yes, yes, and, um, I, I guess the, the weather was really bad too, so, not too concerned, um, we'll see how it does in June, hopefully it's a cool one.
Nancy was over there, uh, this week, and she said everybody was almost completely sold out.
Good.
She said.
And the farmer's market.
Farmers market.
I was talking to the, I'm on my, you know.
Yeah, I know, it's work.
Okay.
I'm not coming.
Okay, yeah, um, I, I think the farmers market's on, and it's a great sign, so, that's, they were, they were hoping a lot of people wise, wild, to pay even, and. That's one day, there isn't a lot more in town, so it will bring people in the town, and, um, they'll come up further and shop, and, um. Obviously, it's working.
There's a rumor in town, something about a service, is that, uh?
Yes, I, I talked, I talked with them today, and I have spoken with them, we're gonna speak a little further, um. They only have one date, July seventeenth, and that's the worst date of my vacation, so I will be in town, so I'm asking C C P. to be the sponsor for this event, and what I want to tell you is we will sell tickets at that time, and I'm happy to do that from my office. And so all, a portion of proceeds from pre-stick ticket sales and at-the-door sales will go back to C C P., so it could be a great fundraiser. And really, they don't need anything from you, just it would be nice to have someone around since I'm not here in case they need anything, but they'll do two shows on July seventeenth.
No elephants?
Hmm.
No elephants?
No elephants. I think, I don't think there's any animals, I think they do have, um, heavy rods, I do consider that an animal, but, um.
We had training for raptors, it was a raptor show.
Yeah, we know. So, that's exciting, so it'll, it'll end up being a nice little fundraiser for C C P.
If you give it a top that, I'll put my tux on.
You heard it. Bob's committed.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. Uh, next item of business is the proposed budget, utility rates, do you scare?
Before we get started, I just wanted to update you, we had discussed the new wage an hour law, the new minimum salary for, to be exempt. And we, it's, it's four thousand less, they did go ahead and vote on that, the new minimum for someone to be salaried, considered salaried is forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-six a year. And that schedule will take effect December first, so that will have very little effect on us. For the two employees, three employees that fall in category, only two of them are likely to have overtime, and our policy is for them to take comp time first, unless they're unable to use comp time for something. It shouldn't affect us too much, there's upcoming. Back up and go over pages two and three, that was staff report, and actually the, um, the numbers, they worked so hard on, made all those decisions. The budget summary just shows how much each department split out by operating costs and capital. And we concluded a ninety thousand dollar contingency, um, of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars shortfall in the harbor that will be absorbed by a general fund. And, um, the third page showing you the breakdown of the capital projects by fund, and by department, and by, um, by funding a source as well, where the money's coming from. Any other questions about those pieces before we go into the summary? I'm dragging through the entire, all those numbers, but, um, the entire budget, proposed budget for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen and seventeen is seventy-nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. That includes three million, one hundred and five thousand, six hundred dollars for capital projects, um, as attached. Utility rates, well, the overall budget is forty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars lower than fiscal year sixteen. Utility rates will remain the same, um, which is, the minimum would be one hundred and seven dollars and ninety-two cents for water, sewer, trash. And the tax rate will be changed to point three two six per one hundred dollars of assessed value, and that is not to increase, um, the taxes on the individual, that is just to equalize the overall tax revenue. Because of the decrease in property values on the recent or fifteen county assessments. Um, it is notable that due to land, land decrease more than improvements, and so some people will have an increase, and some will see a decrease. So that, you will hear about that.
Total taxes paid.
And their total taxes paid, if someone has a large lot, they're likely to have a little bit of a decrease, if they have a small lot, a large home, or home and garage, they're likely to have a little bit of an increase.
Right.
So it was recommended this time that the council set up a public hearing to be held on June ninth, two thousand sixteen, in their comments regarding the proposed fiscal year sixteen and seventeen budget.
We have a motion to, what, what, what day do you say?
June.
September ninth. You said May ninth, wait, Nancy said you. June ninth.
June.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Only discussion I have is, I'd like to throw the, thank you for, I'm told hours you put in, uh, preparing and presenting the budgets, and you did fantastic job, so, thank you very much.
Uh, all in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Any opposed?
Yes.
I just did that to scare you. Very nice work, Debbie.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next item of business is a North Hampton County request regarding former middle school. So, look, I assume you've heard of the staff contact for this? Far away, Louie.
At the last meeting, um, Chris Tucker, the economic development director for North Hampton County, he spoke during the public comment. Requested that the council adopt this resolution, um, for, uh, to develop, to support to develop a small, um, excuse me, Machu Picchu middle school for a small business incubator or a community kitchen. And, um, we had a work session, um, and discussed it on April twentieth, and then tonight we have the, um, resolution to approve, your deadline to submit for the grant is tomorrow.
Right. Uh, there is no cost to the town to this, there's no, there's nothing that we need to do, uh, I think that this is a, is a, uh, generally good rule to the county, and something that, see, that we could even help us. In some sense, anything that helps us is probably ultimately going to help the county. Uh, may I have a motion, uh, to approve this resolution?
No, I agree.
Second.
Is there any discussion before I go on? No, I move for adoption of resolution number two zero one six zero five one nine, supporting planning for the development of small business incubator or community kitchen in Machu Picchu, Virginia, as noticed, and for go reading of the resolution, any prior vote.
Natali, yes.
Dan, yes.
Dan, yes.
Dan, yes.
Brian, yes.
Question's carried. Thank you very much. This time, we are finished with most of the things, uh, does anyone have any comments, some town members, or any comments in this panel?
I just want to say, Mary, I'm sitting in council, the actual guy, get through the budget, through the process along with our trainer.
I'd also like to identify that the humans are going above and beyond in the budget process as well, uh, some things she does are not noticed, but they are greatly appreciated.
Well said, Brett, thank you, Louie. Good job. Um, any, anyone else with any comments? I'd like to congratulate Babe Creek for the, uh, presentation of the new houses, and the progressive dinner they had last night. If everything takes off as the one, what's the magazine?
Ideal Living.
Ideal Living, for people who are pre-retiring, and are pre-retiring, I mean, it's gonna be a huge food in Cape Charles. So, I'd like to always thank Babe Creek for doing that last night. Anything else?
And I think that the humans are always above, you know. Always moving, and just one day.
Okay, I have a few announcements, first of all, Genuis has already told you that the Crappy Blues Festival has been moved to, uh, from Saturday to Sunday, and it will be two, two to eight, or two to seven?
Two to seven.
Two to seven. Two to seven. Uh, my office hours will be May twenty-fourth, six to seven, the Cape Charles outdoor market is May twenty-eighth, from nine A M. to twelve noon. Uh, May thirtieth, the town offices will be closed for Memorial Day, June second, there is a town council work session at six P M., June ninth, there is a town council public hearing relative to the budget, we just passed that. Uh, June fourteenth, I have my office hours from two to three, June sixteenth is the town council regular meeting at six, and I believe that is also when we all swear in the new council members. Uh, June twenty-eighth, I have my office hours from six to seven. And I have no further comments, and.
I have a question on, uh, did you get something from the count that said that they would be swearing in here, because I think the individual electees got a letter saying we had to go there.
I have not heard anything about that.
Exactly, they do.
They do, typically, and I've sent, um, Tracy Johnson a letter a week after the election, and I followed up with an email yesterday, and I've not heard back yet. But typically, um, she or a member of her staff will come and swear in the council, I'll let you know for sure.
I know, I was sworn in, uh, in town.
Yeah, I was, well, I was last time, because it was a November election, there was only one person elected, but typically, when there's three elected or four elected, they come here, but we've got individual others saying they weren't coming.
Okay, I'll, I'll call her then.
Okay, anything else? Motion adjourned, or who made the motion?
Second.
All in favor?